Hang on a second. A flag, a flag, it's good flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry about that. Okay. Your call.
Alman Rondeau again.
Here.
Alman Carl Schultz.
Here.
Alman Doctor Zen Doudon.
Here.
Alman Ahagir.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion and approve of approval of agenda.
Let's see. Monk Commander Alman Perry.
Aye.
Approve. Consent the agenda.
And make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Aye.
Monk Commander Alman Perry.
Aye.
Approve. Okay, Republican Daniel Heywood.
I bought a lot down home. Bought a lot from the county. White and poplar. Put the west end of water on it. I don't know how long there's been some terrain. I didn't know if they got neat enough to actually hold coy or fish something that we got from the east of Seadose or being as it's in a flood plain, I didn't know if there's ordinance against bringing in filter to raise the level up. So what do you have to take?
There wouldn't be nothing to ask against that. I didn't know what was through it on that particular two lot.
Well.
It'd be quite arduous if I didn't even know them, they can go on through the next place.
Uh, cause it, well, it's rain.
Maybe on the back corner.
Yeah, it's in that little low spot.
But there's no reason why if you wind up with the property, well, you already got the county side of it, right?
Yeah.
From the county.
The county one.
Which they have too, that county had one, one, we had one.
Yep. But I didn't know if bringing in filter because it is in a flood plain. So filter.
Not something like that. You can't build a big mound and things like that. You can build it up a little bit. I mean, you can't build a dam or, you know, something like that or a fall over or something like that.
It'd be six inches.
And you have to maintain it just like with anything else. You can't take.
About twenty pounds of Kentucky bluegrass.
What's your plans for it?
Well, need the other one. Cause the city of St. Mary owns the other lot next to it on the corner of Poplar and.
We own the one next to Poplar, right?
Poplar and Wyatt. I need to see what steps I need to do to buy that from the city. Cause otherwise being ten foot from the property line, I won't be able to build a ten foot white shop.
How is that on the tax book thing by now?
Is that flood team a buyout?
Yeah, well, it's not. No, it's not by you. It could be done. It's on the corner where you told you go back where Tony used to live.
Yeah, Tony's.
The first two lots on the right, which always got Jerry on that. But you don't, the first two lots. And he done got one from the county. The second one, the first one in St. Mary's, we own it.
Right.
And I don't know how we wind up probably taxed.
I assume it's taxed. County has half of it, we have half of it. So probably just take it, split it between the two of us. And since we broke taxes, there's no taxes and we didn't run any back stuff on it. So it's really clear for us.
Well, I know, was it one lot and then we own half and they own half or was it two lots?
Yeah, no. I, I don't know. I can't go back.
I own the half.
Thirty by one fifty.
They probably one lot there. Most lots are thirty. But they are thirty, they're not. Do we, hey, one divide or, yeah, last time we did that, we give it to them. You know, they start paying taxes on, take care of it. And with army, people got property next to it. When nobody showed interest in it. Down through the border because the bar, the county, he already got the county part next to it. So that's just be that one art there next to the road.
It ain't been a thing to take care of.
It ain't been good enough. It ain't been like no problem. It ain't been like nothing.
Somebody take care of it, you know?
Anybody got a motion? What they want to do?
They're wanting to put a shop in?
Yep.
No, you can't build a building on.
Oh, you can't build it?
No, not in flood.
That's flood.
Well, if you can, you can beat the crowd here.
Right. What's? You gotta have like holes to water it past through.
Or you could have a door on, a big door on each end.
Yeah, as long as there's.
You have a door on each end or you have to have valves where the water will open for water to flow through. No way it won't.
As long as water can get through it, you're fine.
Or it's gonna get moving out.
Yeah. Organize.
The rule like we got is made for flash floods. We don't have flash floods. Art comes in back. Well, now we got to come house it down there. But back there, that's all backup part of that. But we still have to live under same rules and flash floods would, like mine drive, you could have all the doors open and it would fill up slow because it comes dust, you know, we'll get back work. But down here with this quick flood type real fast, it comes through. But theme is rules the same for if you flood, you flood. You gotta have something about there. And according, I know if you got a door on each end, a big door, it's considered floating. Now, anybody got a motion?
I make a motion to get it changed.
You gotta pay all the fees and things. We're going out, not yet.
Yeah, I got to do all.
We won't be out there.
Add strength. Do all that.
Yeah, Monk second.
I'll say.
Want your lady and David Alman Perry?
Aye.
Aye.
Good choice. Get your paperwork, David, they take care of our block.
I just had to drop it off with David and.
You did work with David to get it all took care of. You got any questions, call him. Give him help.
Yeah.
You got a list.
The, uh, the buyout, the flood drive buyout property, uh, what do we have to do to lease that to put a garden in?
Well, is it gonna be down there where the property you got?
On the other side of Poplar.
Well, it'd have to be on the other side. There ain't no more on that side.
No.
Well, all you gotta do is, uh, pay a dollar a year.
Have insurance on it.
No, you, you know.
Well, homeowners would cover.
Yeah, your homeowner, if that, well, see that's not gonna be in your name. I don't know how you insure them. I mean, I do, cause I've got a business on mine, but I don't know how you insure it. You don't own. I don't know about that.
I know when I took care of the lot across the road from your place.
Could you get engine up?
Yeah, I, I had to get insurance on it.
If they went across the street, you can't. But I don't know about him down there where they ride. I don't know if can't make. Monk people don't have it anymore. I mean.
All right, so check on insurance and then.
Didn't try to get it.
And then talk to David about it.
Right, yeah. Other than that, I ain't got a problem with it. Keep the plant, keep the weeds down there with the skeetles.
And then, cause there's supposed to be a road back behind there. Let's see if I'd, uh, cleared up some of that brush that's running through the chipper shredder.
There's no road back behind there. They didn't property back there and we got a dog cemetery back there and different things and weeds, weeds, weeds all the time. But that's all, well, it's not for people to be going back there. That's pretty well closed off in the public because they really nothing back. You're going, you talking about going straight on back?
No, at the end where Mulberry, where it was originally flooded. Cause if you go through the church parking lot and then come on down, I think that was Mulberry. But it's a lot of fresh.
Mulberry sixty-one.
Well, whatever comes across right here. Cause on the map it was showing where it was plotted out. Anybody who wanted.
Well, there could be a lot of roads money that flooded out in this town. It was never that. We got dozens of them that was never actually road. And we don't sell them, we don't give them away. If you, if you got property next to them, like alleys and things, we let you use them. But you don't own them and you, you know, he got an alley behind him and the people in the middle, they got half and half. You can use them, but you can't own them.
Well, the smaller scrub, the brush and everything, I wanna know if I can clear that out when I get through the chipper shredder and make molds. Cause a bunch of small scrub down there.
I don't give a damn about that. Just let the city of Lloyd know that you're gonna be back there doing that.
Well, it's right at the end of.
I know. I know that property there, the, now, be careful. Let me tell you, when you first go behind your property there, you've been open to all that. When you go through there, on the right is private property.
Yeah.
That's all about the worker off there.
Yeah, that's the name.
That on the right, that private. On the left is buyout.
Yeah. And then, I don't know, he said he couldn't put anything on the flood buyout property, but what about Purple Martin?
Oh, yeah. Birdhouse.
Well, they called the flood buyout property. I know he said he couldn't build anything, but I didn't know if Purple Martin birdhouse was.
I don't call that building anything. That a problem there. Now, what about, what about you talking about on the buyout? Were you, would you?
Yeah, on the other side.
Okay, now you can put anything up there like that. Wish you would.
Well, the skeetles aren't bad down here.
Yeah. Missouri burly.
Might do seem in Alaska.
They fall in matter.
Uh, and then I don't know if the city had ordinance on heights on retaining walls.
You can build a wall in there.
No, no, this is up next to his house. Cause whether or not.
That's true.
Yeah, cause I'm like, all right, either we're gonna have to do two foot at a time or have one help grade, which is a good point.
Are you talking about between us or behind you?
No, we're on up the hill, cause I might come out more.
Oh, for your, you're building a shop there or?
Oh, no, not there. I don't build down here now. So yeah, that. Had to give up as, that was a big mistake.
We, I don't know about retaining walls. We got fixing though, we do, we got retaining law.
Not that I'm aware of.
I did, definitely built one. As long as you don't get across the line and, and like that.
And waterize, sterilize it away or something.
They had to build them. You have to get a building for me, I have to put up any wall or any fence or anything. But, and we have to check it out and make sure that, we, we probably got some easements in there, I'm sure. If there's water line, sewer line, and if you ain't crossing them or building over them or something like that. Or if you are, and we might let you, but let you know they may have tear down.
Yeah, sorry son, I figured.
But once you come up there and show us what you're gonna do and I conclude, then we'll look at it and see if you're hitting there or what you gotta do differently. So I won't give you a blanket yet, but retaining wall is legal. Do we see what you gotta, they're gonna do and how you're gonna do it? But your house get a permit to do it anyhow.
Was it thirty-five dollars for years?
No, different price for a different amount. It goes by dollars sign, then they're pretty very reasonable, they're not.
They're all different.
And they go several thousand dollars different from one to the other.
That's all I got.
I hope I answered all your questions you asked, huh? They got everything you wanted.
Yeah, no, just for that's for him.
But I can't be gonna make money for giving them what they wanted. They asked for it, but they found out they didn't want it. I appreciate you, Connor.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Anything we can do to help, let us know. But if you got, if there's something you don't know, ask before you do it.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, David, you got all the answers. If it's something the board has to do, then we'll get the answer for you.
It's on down here, he didn't have the answer.
Won't do it.
That'd work, take it away.
You got it, you go right way.
Yep.
Oh.
Got pity me.
Yeah, thank you.
New business. Honey is your order. No matter what you do, you're gonna make somebody mad. We made ten people, we made three people happier. We made one, two, three, four, four, six more people pretty happy and we made one guy gonna be mad. He not it. Three people gonna get nine hundred and fifty dollars and six people gonna get forty one, four hundred and eleven dollars from fifty six. Only eleven people or ten? We said, we got ten. No, ten people's all put in for application. And only people put in application with others. I don't know how they. Anybody got any questions? No questions?
Nope.
Okay, the three people with nine hundred and fifty dollars, they was right, they was rated on different. What we come up with and two, four, six, and one was denied. Huh? We move on? If you get a check in the mail, you know what it was. Well, yeah, we're down in the department meeting, right? You report.
I got that to report.
That good?
Yeah.
Thank you, department, we got one. We will have a problem, we, we got an interview very soon. I hope we have one by the next quarter. I think we will. Party department.
We have three calls. One was brush fire, one with the LZ, waiting zone, Savage, BMS, and then we have medical. We had to buy new tires for seventy fifty-one tanker, rest of your tires were underneath minimum. Yeah, minimum, uh, tread depth. Was carrying fifteen hundred gallon of water, did one have a blowout. It was, uh, I think twelve hundred for both wheels and tire. We had to change the wheels out on it because they do not make them side tires for them wheels anymore, so we had to do that. The department, out of our fundraising money, we bought us a big eighty gallon compressor. We're getting ready to start putting in the line and stuff to drop down to our air brick trucks, our, uh, air bricks, so we can now build up the air and have a better response time, which I wait five, ten minutes for, you know, trucks to start building up. March nineteenth, which is the following Saturday from this coming Saturday, I have five, five fighters going to Grand Bend engulfment rescue, since we knew a lot of former ground here, it's kind of nice to be able to do and use some training on that. We turned and painted some fire hydrants between H Street, Spruce Street, Cedar Street. We're gonna keep continuing painting more. We get warmer weather again, a nice weather kind of comes out on that one, but that's basically all I have to report on that.
You gonna, what are you doing up front today, is there?
Uh, we were talking about it. We're trying, trying to see with the funding, what's gonna happen with prices going down here. I mean, I understand we got that one and the price of climate's gonna go up probably, you know, twelve hours to play, so I'm not sure.
And where else is what?
Yeah, and I'm, uh, I'm just trying to get with you guys when we wanna do it, because we was talking in April, but I know there's a few things on it, on the CMA hall, I think, and then the church is having something, and then I'm, uh, Easter, so it might be towards the end of, end of April.
First of November.
May. So, but we're gonna, we do have volunteers, uh, that's gonna help us out since we don't have enough manpower to do it. There's a lot of, uh, family friends and stuff that said that they were helping, you know, Annette helps every year, she's pretty well on it. She knows the routine of what goes on there, so as soon as we find out what we're gonna do, then we're gonna set it up. I'll have flyers out and stuff like that and on our Facebook page.
Do you guys interact at all with Gilster or Loia on the grain bin rescue stuff?
Do what?
Do you interact with?
So what we're, so what we're doing with the grain bin rescue, uh, right now is Mizzou is putting on this rescue, it's a free class. Normally there's six thousand dollars every time they come to do this, um, so this is the first change we got where we had a free class in the county.
Oh, that's great.
So we are taking advantage of it, so all the county fire departments are getting first dibs first and then, you know, outside is really allowing, the maximum is thirty. After they go over thirty, then they gotta have extra instructors. And since our previous, uh, our previous, um, M U, uh, however you wanna say it, instructor over the fire side of it, um, he passed away. Now the new one took it over and he's kind of learning how things will go. And I'm, uh, that's where the point of it with other instructors, that's where they're gonna have to show us. So, uh, this is the first time we're doing it, but like I said, with the grain operations that goes on around Kaskaski, McPride area, um, State General, you know, all the big companies, if, you know, we had to respond to it, we can overdo it. And I'm, uh, pretty well, it's a, you know, a common sense thing what to do, but this year is, uh, we get to play an action with the grain and actually see what it does and stuff and how it involves you. The other training we're gonna be doing, which it ain't set up yet, I don't know if it's gonna be next month or next month, but we are interacting with Perryville now on mutual aid agreements and stuff. We set up quite a few agreements with the airport. So we're gonna be actually doing training with their, uh, plane and stuff, where if they have an accident with airplane, you know, crash or something like that, how to run their big foam trucks and stuff down there. And that's where we're getting in on that too, so, um, that's pretty good, cause more training, barriers, you know.
Great.
Price is right. That's it. What we're right now?
Street.
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 Think we're gonna hold off on that rock on the relics on Church Street. We're gonna be taking loads of bricks down from docks, uh, residents and that's gonna rub it up more, so we're gonna hold off getting rock put in there. Other than that, we gotta get, I don't know if we got any chat left down at the street department. I haven't been down there and looked yet, but we need to get a bunch of chat, get these potholes filled in until we get the coal patch put in. We need to find out exactly where we're gonna get that at. I'm talking to.
What are we doing? Limehill screening is what they get for that, ain't it? For, you know, if we find those.
We all think we got some grit fishing, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Red fishes. That gets mine and stuff.
They call it screenings.
Screens.
I think it's to fill up my basement.
Limehill used to give it to us, but I don't know if it still do it now.
Well, with this cold weather coming in like it is and put that coal patch in it, so.
Well, you can't.
We can't do that till we get them screenings in, that should last for a little longer.
You gotta clean.
It's getting bad, getting bad.
With him, with coal pack, we need to clean them out and put a base down there before we put that coal back in there.
Yeah.
You're dumping that on that dirty hole.
Yeah, it's smaller now.
They make us all base stuff to put in there and, and upstairs in there for, cause there ain't no money, it's asphalt.
Yeah, you need to. Figure out the date, the time to get it where I can snow it off that.
Well, we can, we can get Mike one, they ain't doing nothing right. They, we ain't got screening right, they don't get them.
Yeah.
I don't know, I guess we're still fixing pretty good for the other screen for the streets for snow. Or is that, that ain't the same stuff?
We use like cinders for the.
Cinders and stuff.
Yeah.
I, I get that handled, we're not good to pour that over. I worked and waited before I come down and did it, almost looks like we ain't for this now.
Yeah, no, no, we shouldn't have. Think it's going fifty degrees by Sunday, so it's all gonna melt off before we can do it. I'm just worried about the holes right now that we need patched up for some, uh, knocking alignment out. Let's get it filled in. That's all I got. Water?
Water department's doing fine. The only thing that's going on is we need to work out the sledge hauling. And Frankie has a idea, tie that in ours with theirs up in State General, so we mind.
No, so basically I'm gonna talk to Metro Bank out of Crete, Illinois. They'll be hauling the partial edge up there here within probably the next month or two. I'm not for sure, it's just been, we got our million and things going. Tyler, I'll talk to him. We'll see what we can do, cause it's gonna cost us cheap. Yeah, it's gonna be cheaper on us if we do it while he's here instead of traveling back, cause I mean, they come across the ferry and everything with traffic. So if we can, I can talk to him and make a ballgame of when he's gonna be hauling up there and they can have a truck here to be hauling to. Basically, the only thing's gonna be different on our SR, uh, our, yeah, our sleds, tapers. Basically, what I'm gonna have to do is we're gonna have to do winging blocking, um, instead of hauling, you know, cause outside company hauls it, I don't have to do any kind of testing or anything like that except for, for metals for the, you know. But if they do winging block this, then it's gonna be soil contact testing and, you know, the matter's falling into the ground and stuff and, uh, and where, you know, GPS and stuff, but that ain't gonna be nothing different from what I'm, just a little bit more paper on that part. So as soon as I get ahold of him, I'm gonna have him contact Carl. They can arrange what the price is gonna be and everything, and we, uh, we guys can make an agreement on it and then, uh, we'll try to probably come down and visit the plant just to see what all. In my opinion, one, sledge hauling, that, I know, I know we did it in the past, you know, couple loads here, couple loads there, and, you know, technically the digest would be a great amount of sludge without us having, we usually got a holding bins, but we have technicalities sometimes in the sewer plant where we have to dump a lot more than others. But I think if we empty everything at once, I think we'd be good for a year, year and a half, and we can build the money back up for them to take off and haul again. And, uh, we can just put money aside every year, every month, you know, and say it's what it's gonna be, so I think that, that'd be a good idea to do on that part. We had on the shirt, waterside. Well, anyways, waterside. Carl's talked to the chambers about if they would, uh, take over the cost of putting in the meter at the tower side, uh, so we can see what we're, we're actually pulling out the tower and coming into town for service to the customers. It's gonna help us out with our, you know, our loss of the water. So what we're gonna do is the parts are ordered. As soon as everything comes in, we have a waiting period on the spool, or on the two spools, we got a waiting period on them. It could be a matter of two, three weeks, I'm not sure yet. They're supposed to contact us back and let us know. As soon as the parts come in, we are gonna go in there and, uh, do a locate on that up there. We're gonna have to put it on the outside of the fence. I did the measurements on it and stuff. We're gonna put it right on the outside of the fence. I wish I could put it in the fence, but we ain't got no ferry. It's just gonna be a meter pit, a meter in, and ain't gonna be no control valves or anything where somebody can just get in there and tamper with it. I mean, it's gonna be all secured. But, uh, we're gonna put it in and, uh, it'll be on probably a weekend that we come to put it in. Cause now season's starting to pick up, so work's a little bit different on that part. So we're gonna get that in and hopefully we can find out what's going on with our water loss. We did, uh, a couple of them, uh, listening to Al and stuff. We haven't found nothing out of ordinary yet. But we're still jumping around, uh, March is windy month, so it's kinda hard to hear when winds blowing ninety odd an hour. But, um, if we find something, we'll market and we'll kind of investigate it a little bit more. I do know that we've been having water running across the road, been checking samples on the water and stuff too, but see, I noticed that water shot up over the road and didn't see it before, right here on Cedar. So tested it, cause we got that water main right there, so I was testing it, no chlorine in it, but we, as you on the street side, we might need to edge that ditch up so it running up over the road. So, so anyways, I'm looking, I hope we can get to that sometime. But.
What ditch? What, what ditch?
The ditch right here on Cedar.
Yeah.
Third, dude.
Yeah, Cedar and Third, right here by our bar, probably.
Oh, I see that down there, that, that, I don't know how that got filled up some. That used to be a deep ditch.
Mm-hmm, they used to be a deep ditch.
You got in there, you have that record, you get down now, and you can drive a truck there.
Yeah.
That's what three boys do.
Anyway, so, other than that, that's all I got on Waterside, I wanna work it.
I answered all my questions, I'm, on the meter, I don't know why. You done answered that? Okay, let's see who we got now. Parts them through?
Yeah, you meant, Maria mentioned cats, uh, problem with cats last time, like you got a trap, uh, and, uh, however, with trapping them. You don't want to leave a cat in there too long, so we have to work out something, maybe it's maybe myself, uh, when there is something in there, so I can pick it up and, uh, take care of. Do you have any estimate of how many cats, do you have to, do you have any estimate of how many cats we're talking about? Is it five, or?
Thirty.
Are you serious?
No, she's not lying.
She's not lying, they're, yeah, it's.
Right, well, mantas is.
Two years ago, I don't know what it is now.
Okay, when mantas is put live traps out, and there'll be, uh, canned mackerel in there, which is smelly in the trap, so usually you get.
Yeah, I trapped a few of them years ago, and I didn't know what to do with them, so I took them where, because they're near a barn, but it was like somebody was dunking in there, and now, I don't know if they're dunking or what, but there's a lot of them.
Well, they're not fixed, I'll think it's the produce and.
Yeah.
So, yeah, probably, yeah, a hundred and thirty.
There are some cats, right?
I mean, they're everywhere.
That will, uh, that, I'm familiar with in Arkansas, but not around here, where they'll take a cat, and they have vets that will fix them, and then they'll clip their ears to mark their ears, so you know that it's a fixed feral cat, and then release it again, so it won't, at least it won't reproduce. So that's, uh, I have to talk to the people, okay, to see if they, uh, will integrate us, uh, with them in some ways, so.
I don't think there's anybody around here that. They always say they're cool.
Yeah.
Because of cats, you know?
Well, you got people beating these cats.
Oh, yeah.
I know.
Well, if you don't fear, they give you trash. I don't fear, but they give you trash, and you're not a company.
If they want to get the law, I'd take care of them, they won't let them.
That's what I say too.
Yeah, they're, they're everywhere.
I can't, I can't tell anybody with a cat, but they pay a lot for keeping it home.
Yep.
That's how many.
Oh, so what's the highest, where is the highest population density?
I would say from Cedar to sixty-one of Mulberry. All that street.
On Mulberry?
All that street, and half the other past cars.
You're gonna be getting to more, it seems like you're gonna involve my charge.
Yeah, that's where I'm at, that. Smash them all down, haul them off.
So we, we, if we, uh, trap them, then where do we go from there? I called somebody to come pick up.
We call the, I'll pick up my pickup truck, you know, with the trap, and then, uh, when, uh, the trap's empty, then I'll bring it back, rebate it, and that, and just keep on working.
The other question, we'll be more in the yard, I got a repellent, but it's in my garage. Before I used to have five or six cats in my garage, two in the lot, and they all ran all over the place, and it just ran down, I put it to home, and, uh, I got this repellent, I had it years ago, and I found it again, and it sprayed.
Oh, okay.
They walk in the garage, and I didn't want them in the garage.
I thought we canceled it.
So, you know, that, that helps, that's what he's, all around my car, and, you know, my.
Yeah, the marketplace.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, citizen participation, anybody got? Anything? Last call. What was your adjourned in?
I make a motion during the meeting.
We do have a total petition. Motion made, that on, Bill?
Aye.
Close. Good night.